We're gonna call the work session to order. Everybody, please have a seat. All right, the first work session item that we have today is a presentation on the litter getter project and the Osprey Initiative. Kim Burmeister. Possibly Dawn. Oh, hey, Kim.
Oh, I was hoping Cassie. Cassie? Hey. Okay, so she can answer questions that I can't answer for you, but basically, part of our MS4 program is to identify our litter problems in the city, and we really don't have many, much of a litter problem in the city, but also to quantify it and weigh it and give feedback on how much litter we're collecting. And one way that we did this in the past year is with the litter getter program where Osprey Initiative came in with a litter boom at the Wind Dixie Pond, which is city-owned, central detention area that goes into Calpine Creek. And they set up that, and for 12 months, they've been monitoring, collecting the litter, and sending us reports on it, so we'll know what our problems are, how much. And what we found out is what we kind of suspected, that we don't have a really big litter problem, but even a little bit is too much. So, in the past year, they, the Osprey Initiative litter boom in the pond collected 275 pounds of material. It doesn't sound like a lot, but that's 275 pounds that's not gonna go downstream into Calpine Creek, downstream neighbors. 60% of that was plastic, and that's kind of what we anticipated, that the plastic bags were 30, of the 60%, about 33% of that was plastic bags. And I could go, you know, in more detail, but that's the guts of it. We collected through that program 275 pounds of trash from the Wind Dixie Pond, and that has opened the door for next year for us to, we have qualified for a GOMESA grant to install 12 more litter traps in different drains all around the city. And this one will be funded by, 100% funded. And we're excited about that coming up for next year. Nicole has more information on that upcoming grant, and also, she'll be talking to you guys at the next council meeting about extending the grant from this, this year's program with Osprey Initiative. But we, we have a good problem. We came out with more money, money left over from that that wasn't used, and so Nicole is gonna be asking to extend that until the end of the year, so they can complete their one-year contract. And it's just leftover money that they're wanting to finish out the contract with the complete funds. Do y'all have any questions?
Counsel.
And we have Cassie with Osprey Initiative here, if you have any questions on the collection of the trash from the Wind Dixie Pond.
Any idea where we're gonna put the other 12 collectors?
We do. We have some hotspot areas that we went out with George Lad and walked around the city to find good areas for trash collection, or for litter collection, and there's 12 of them. One of them's, or I see two or three of them are down about the North Park area, the roundabout, where the Rose Garden is. And then there's another one anticipated to be put on the South Beach, that huge drain that comes down from this, and goes into, it comes down from South Mobile Street to South Beach, then at the Old Boat Launch in the pier, and there's four or five around the downtown area. One's at Big Mouth Gulley in Bayou.
That's the one I was thinking of, the bottom of the hill here.
Right. And up here around Section Street North where the Motte-Grau rolls, because we know that'll, even though our sweeper gets a lot of the trash, the drain, there's a lot that goes into the storm drain, that'll collect that, and we'll get feedback on that for three years, and that'll be paid for by the GOMESA and AIDAM funding.
So, if the one, if you put the one down at Bayou and Section, will it be over there in that big culvert?
It will be. There'll be two there that are proposed there. If you have ideas on locations, then it's not too late in the game to suggest locations.
I know that one's, it's very visible and...
And they're gonna be into, into the drain, so we can't see, you know, you won't be able to see them, they won't cause an aesthetic issue or anything. And they'll be 100% maintained by the, by the contractor, but that's next year, so, end of this year.
You done, Counsel? Yeah, so we're talking two different things, correct? Let me just kind of balance this out.
Right, we are, and I'm sorry, I kind of jumped ahead of the game.
Right.
I think y'all are, yeah.
I wanna make sure that we're clarifying.
12 months, yes, sir. What we've done this year is, our 2022 into 2023, with the contract period ending the 31st of October, hopefully to be extended into December for just a few months. But anyway, so far, they collected 275 pounds.
Okay, now, those are the litter getters that are not in the drains.
Right, that one is a floating boom in the pond.
These are boons that float.
Yes.
Okay, that's one. Now, that one we're speaking on is the one that we caught, the 275 pounds.
Yes, that's correct.
And we're thinking that we need to put them in the same place?
No, different.
And additional?
Additional places.
Or we're thinking, take them out of that place?
And the city will own that one, so if we want to leave it there?
We'll have to, if it's not needed. That's, that's, that's what I'm saying. So, we'll use that somewhere else, but we know that they work.
Right.
But now, we gotta find other hotspots.
Yeah, and the ones that we're proposing for the drains, the ones that we got the grant for for next year, they're different. They go inside a drain, and they're more like litter receptors. I'm using the wrong word when I say litter getter.
It's like a strainer.
They're litter receptors. They're like rakes that go inside the drain.
Yes.
So, and they'll be customized for each drain, but basically, they'll, the conception is, I mean, the conceptual of it will be the same. It'll be like a rake device put in the drains.
Right, and how many of those will we have? How many of those will we have?
12.
12 of those?
12 of those proposed.
And how many boons will we have?
We'll have the boom from the Wind Dixie Pond.
That one boom?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, now we clarify.
Right.
That's exactly right.
How often do you have to clean those rakes out? I mean, it seems like if you don't clean them out often, and it starts filling up, it'll just...
Right. Well, the contracts for twice a month cleaning the same as the contract for the boom was this year, where they, Osprey Initiative went in and cleaned out the boom twice a month, and it'll be the same with the drains.
Except for this summer, when we had no rain.
Right. Maybe nothing to clean out, maybe.
Yeah, I think it's great. I mean, I think it's great. Any, any, any other information that you want to give us, but I think it's great. I'm excited about it.
Thank you, thanks for y'all's support.
Yeah, free is good. Thanks, Kim.
You have a good one.
Thanks, Kim.
All right, so I guess, Richard, you're up for the presentation on the demo of the...
Yes, sir, and this is just to share some information, and for maybe a change, I'm not asking for anything, I'm not pitching anything, I'm not selling anything. We found this interesting. You know, it's kind of interesting when you think, people don't get real excited about garbage truck technology, but really, you know, for probably 80 years, every garbage truck really worked the same. It was a rear loader with guys that loaded, and about 30 years ago, somebody invented the auto-arm truck, and basically, that's become the, the industry standard, and there really hadn't been a whole lot of technology change, other than perfection of that technology. And I know we've all seen articles in the news. I know the City of Mobile has purchased an all-electric truck, which is a, a very novel approach, I will tell you, and my personal opinion that on, on the chassis side of things, I don't think big trucks are as far along as the passenger vehicles, but they're getting there. But a vendor who is actually manufactured here in Alabama, Heil, reached out to us through one of their, their companies, and asked if we'd be willing to take a demo of a hybrid. And they call it their Rev Amp, and just so you know, Heil is the company that makes the garbage body, and when, and just with, we use new ways in the city. With a garbage body, you pick the garbage body you want, and then they'll tell you every chassis that it can go on, whether it's a Mack, or Freightliner, or Peterbilt, or a Kenworth, or whatever. So, Heil, of course, is the, is a manufacturer of Packer bodies, and they really don't care what chassis you like. They, they design their Packer bodies to fit on the chassis of your choice, as long as it's rated for it. But this one that we demoed back in June was kind of interesting. It was a new thought. Heil said, what if we built an electric Packer body? Meaning that it is completely self-contained within itself, and, and would operate off its own house chassis, or off, not off, dependent upon the chassis for power, but have its own battery and run everything off of it. Just a little bit of information, Ricky Ward was our operator that ran this truck. They only ran about 18 miles, but they serviced 120 houses, and they did that in about an hour and nine minutes. And, and the pictures I passed around is the actual truck unloading in the, in the transfer station, and the photos that you see up on the screen are actual photos of the actual truck that we tried out, as well as it being unloaded and such. But probably the unique thing about this is that it's a traditional diesel chassis, okay? And, and as you all know, the, the traditional garbage truck, like many heavy equipment, works like this. You have, you have a diesel engine and transmission, and you have a transfer case that runs a PTO. And that PTO drives a very large hydraulic pump that gives all of the hydraulic capacity to run all the mechanisms in the Packer body. So, the biggest challenge is, is a garbage truck, when it's working, even when it's not moving, the engine is running at a pretty high RPM, so it's kind of roaring, so that it's producing enough RPMs to pump the hydraulics to make all the parts of the truck work. So, you know, when we talk about our equipment, it's usually never about the number of miles, it's always about the number of hours, because that truck, that engine is, is running at a high RPM the whole time it's on the route. Well, in the case, and you can kind of see where they turned on the telemetry, and, and this is actually the area they serviced, and I'll mention a little bit, that this, this piece of equipment had something, a technology on it that, that could track every can serviced. It could track missed cans that were not out, cans that were blocked by cars and things of that nature. But, and that just kind of gives you some of the view of the technology. It actually takes a picture of every can serviced, and also generates a map on a, on a Google Street View, as well as on a Google Plan View of that service collection route. But the interesting thing about the EV body is there is no hydraulics on it. And probably the, the, the biggest challenge that, that we have is we collect our garbage mostly in the, at night, in the early morning hours. The problem is, if you have a hydraulic leak, you really don't know about it until you've lost enough fluid that the hydraulics are not operating correctly. And by that time, we've basically streaked the road with hydraulic fluid, and, and there's a cleanup to that, because hydraulic lines do break, they do crack, fittings start leaking and things of that nature. The other thing is, is that with an electric body, that's kind of unique, is when the truck is servicing the can at a stop, the engine's at idle. It's not running at a high RPM, because it doesn't need that engine power to, to operate the Packer body. And I gotta give Heil credit, one of the most unique things is they simplify the mechanism. It uses a auger to move the garbage from the hopper and compact it into the body. And as Councilman Burrell can tell you, the, the simplest machine in the world is a lever, the second simplest machine in the world is a screw. It is as simple as it can be, as far as its mechanism and reliability and things of that nature. And then, extra benefits is this truck was very, very fast. It was very, very quiet compared to a traditional truck, and being fast and quiet is efficient. But part of what they bragged about is that with a regular 22240 plug is all you need for an overnight charging. You don't have to have a special charging station or anything else. Same plug you'd plug a welder into, you can plug this truck, truck in, in six to eight hours, it's fully recharged. And that's pretty good for garbage, since most of average garbage truck is down 14 hours out of 24, so the, the charging time is available there. And, you know, they claim a 35% fuel savings. I will tell you that based upon the fact that today, the electric, EV Packer body is about twice as expensive as traditional, your return in investment is not there yet, but I think those numbers will get better and better. And again, in the case of an EV body, you can pick whatever chassis you want, a traditional diesel, natural gas, or even electric. And they had a little note here about the, the cost of hydraulic leaks, which doesn't really include the cost of the cleanup and the environmental damage. And that is just, that's a problem with the heavy hydraulic, again, showing that with a 22240 AC, six to eight hours, you can recharge the, the rig on there. And one of the other things that was kind of interesting, and I think it's a technology that we will one day fully come talk to you about, but they call it Third Eye Digital, and it is a, more than just a GPS, it is recording events, including the servicing of cans by address, by location, and, you know, has six views on a typical truck of everything that's going around, including the driver. And the, the cool thing is, is that it has all kind of things that you can set it up for, like failed setouts, property damage, block containers, et cetera, et cetera. So, it was fun, it was interesting, and, and I think that the future is coming one day. I don't know when we'll get there. I know that there's a lot of organizations out there that are making grant money available to introduce EV components into a Public Works thing, and we'll keep an eye out for that. But just want to share that with you, and we had not yet had a chance to test and demo a fully electric chassis. I know the City of Mobile did, and they purchased one, and it'll be good to watch how that truck operates on their behalf and such, but just, just want to share that with you, and, you know, I think it's a future, and I don't know if it'll be, you know, in five years or 10 years, but I can see a future when, you know, a lot of the equipment that we operate is no longer internal combustion. So, be glad to answer any questions. It was a, it was a fun demonstration, and, and we liked the opportunity to see what's new out there on the Public Works equipment.
Yeah, Richard, you said it was a hybrid. What kind of fuel is it, is it using to generate the power?
Well, when I say it's a hybrid, it's a diesel truck with an EV body. That was kind of my, my hybrid. So, the chassis, it, the chat, the truck we demoed...
It's not hybrid-powered, then?
No, sort of, kind of. The, the Packer was completely EV, but the chassis was a good old-fashioned Peterbilt diesel chassis, so. And they were not mechanically connected or electric connected, other than controls, because the, the Packer body had its own power source.
The loader is, is all electric?
Yeah.
Okay. How many, you know, you said you could serve up to 1,200 customers on a single charge. How many customers do we serve in a day?
Typical truck services around 800 to 1,000 homes, and that's a heavy day.
Yeah, how many, so how many do we serve? I'm trying to calculate how many trucks we would need.
Well, okay, you gotta, you gotta kind of do the math this way. Remember, on garbage, we're twice a week every household, okay? And so, we, we run somewhere around about 8,000 customers, so every day, we're trying to service 4,000 customers. So, right now, we're running four, five trucks, and that's averaging 800 per truck per day. And, and one of the big thing, as you recall, the last two trucks we bought are little larger trucks than what we've been buying, and those trucks probably are running closer to 1,000 customers a day, where the smaller trucks are still around 800, so. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Richard.
All right, next I think we'll have Crab, Waterwell Expansion Discussion, Crebs Engineering.
Yes, thank y'all, thank you for having us. I'm Caleb Bleach, and this is Mark Smith.
Hey, Caleb.
So, today, we want to talk a little bit about the Fairhope Water System improvements, kind of give you a progress update, and also touch on a resolution that's on for tonight's agenda. So, overview of what we're gonna talk about today. Talk about your existing water system, excuse me. Water demands, historical and projected, your construction progress for Phase 1. So, we put, we, what we're calling Phase 1 are things that are under construction today that's gonna give you more water capacity by next summer. Phase 2 improvements are projects that we are trying to get done by May of 2024, to give you additional capacity. And then, what we're also doing to plan, plan for the future beyond next summer. So, kind of a summary of the existing water system. So, your average demand is 6.1 MGD. Your peak demand, and that happened in July, is 9.2 MGD. You have 10 wells that has a total raw water capacity of 11 MGD, so kind of some definitions here. We talk raw water, that's what you can pump out of the ground. This next number is what you can treat with your existing treatment facilities, is 9.2 million gallons a day. And you have five water, water storage tanks that are approximately 6.3 million gallons, and most of your piping is 8-inch or smaller. So, when we talk about kind of three categories, it's the raw water that we can get out of the ground, it's the treatment capacity, and it's how do we move that water to where the demands are in your system. So, here's a historical water demand for Fairhope, started back in 2014 through current day. And so, you, what you see here is about a 5% average annual growth since 2014. What's important here is on the right-hand side, and what we think's occurred, and what I think we discussed previously with everyone, is we, we think that when your restrictions are happening in the summer months, you're kind of, you're capping that demand. If you had more water to give, you would, your demands would be higher, which is important. And we talk about this next slide and looking at future projections, which we carried out for 20 years. We, we think that it's good to plan on a 20-year horizon. And so, what we're looking at is in 2023, at 9.2 MGD, we're looking at a 3% to 5% growth, so that's that shaded region that you can see there. And that is, you know, we can look in the rears and see you've had about a 5% growth, you know, to look 20 years ahead, to think we're gonna keep a 5% growth, this is kind of a, a crystal ball, but that's why we show that, that shaded region there between 3% to 5%. So, now, we'll talk about the Phase 1 improvements, what's going on right now. So, we've got the water treatment plant number three expansion, a connection to Daphne, the 24-inch water treatment, water main that will take the water from the expanded water treatment plant number three north, and then there's a 12-inch water main that'll take the expanded water treatment plant number three water to the south. All three of those projects are either under, or four of those projects are either constructed or in construction. So, first, we'll talk about the water treatment plant number three. On the left side here, that's a picture of the new treatment building, and under that covered area, that's gonna be the new high-service pumps, just for reference. But the project is approximately 65% complete. The finished water pump station building, that treatment building there is about 90% complete. 95% of the concrete has been poured. The equipment is 90%. What that means is it's been procured, it's on-site, and the electrical's about 30%, which is about where it should be, because the, you can see there, there's no motors installed, so there's quite a bit electrical to do. And the completion date is March 2024. We had a progress meeting last week. The contractor, the Krill Company, feels real good about the completion date. Everything's going really well out there. Second project we have listed is the connection to Daphne, and it's a 6-inch connection that's on the north end of your system, as you're aware, where you have some higher demands. We estimate that you can probably get a million gallons a day from that connection when needed, and they can flow by gravity, so there's no pumps required. As we move through and look at the projections and everything, we didn't include this in the numbers, so everything you're gonna see is gonna be what, the water that you're gonna produce, and this is for the times where you need some additional water. And then, the 24-inch water main project, it's almost 20,000 linear feet of, and it's about, or, excuse me, the, about 70% of the pipe has been delivered, and that's just on pace. From our understanding, there's no delays in materials at this point. And you're almost 50% complete with that project, and this estimated completion date is March 2024. We, I met with Curtis this morning, and he's obviously following this project, and said that Hip Hill believes the contractors feel really good about their progress. I think there are, they have two crews working this. And so, then the 12-inch water main that's going south from water treatment plant number three, it's about a mile and a half, and all the pipe has been delivered, except for the HTP for the creek crossing. That's really not a concern. We're not really seeing any lead time issues with HTP pipe, and that work's gonna begin later this month, and again, its estimated completion date is March 2024. To summarize what all this means as far as the Phase 1, there's a new well at water treatment plant number three that's gonna give you about 600 gallons per minute, but it'll increase the capacity at this plant by about 1.7 MGD, because there, this is one of those situations where you had more raw water capacity than you had treatment and pumping capacity, so you're gaining some additional capacity that you couldn't get out of there to treat. And so, your, your water system capacity will go from 9.2 MGD to 10.9 MGD. And again, just to note, the Daphne connection is just for additional capacity when needed. So, now, we'll talk about Phase 2, and this is, from this point forward, it'll be the item on the agenda for tonight, a resolution for professional services. So, what we're doing in Phase 2, and again, the May 24, May 2024 completion date's our goal, and we're working very hard to meet that, but it is accelerated. We think that, you know, the, there's additional capacity needed for next summer, and so that's what we're, that's our goal, that's what we're shooting for. So, what we're doing there is developing a new well at water treatment plant number one, expand the water treatment plant number one capacity, develop a new well at water treatment plant number three. So, what's important there is we built this plant big enough to take more raw water, and, and the, the ultimate goal is to expand your total treatment capacity from 10.9 to 13.8 MGD.
Caleb, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Absolutely.
Because I'll forget if I don't ask now.
No, go for it.
So, the number, the 10.9 MGD that you have there, does that include the approximately 1 MGD from Daphne?
No, it does not.
Okay, I thought you said that originally, so we'll make sure. And I don't really want to throw that in there either, because...
Yeah, I felt like for the...
I just want to make certain.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, we got about a 9% buffer on that, if you count that.
And so, the, what's important, when we get to this treatment capacity of 13.8 in May, and some of the things we're seeing in the skeletonized models, that third thing we have to, third, third item we have to address is how to move that water in and through your system. And so, I, I do think, you mentioned the Daphne connection, I do think there could be times where you have enough treatment capacity, especially in 2024, but we can't push that water as far north as we need to right now. And we'll talk a little bit about what we're, what our plan is, the plan for that, and give you guys a, you know, a, a plan beyond 2024, so where that's not an issue. So, the Phase 2 improvements at water treatment plant number one, so as I mentioned, we're gonna develop another well. We need additional tray irrigation capacity. Our plan is to relocate one of the tray aerators at the existing water plant number three that won't be used anymore, so that's just less equipment we have to procure before the, before the May goal. Increase finished water pumping capacity to 4 MGD, and increase your chemical feed capacity, your distribution capacity leaving the water treatment plant. And again, like I said, this plant is another one of those plants where you have a well that cycles on and off, so you can get more water out of the ground, more raw water than you can treat. So, we're actually gonna gain more capacity than just what the well's gonna produce. Here's a schematic of what we're planning at water treatment plant number one. We're gonna, the way we're gonna get the May goal to get more water out of this plant is we're gonna cut, we're gonna break it up into two phases. We're gonna have to drill the well, put in the aerator, and the new finished water pumps, and the main, the new water main leaving the plant. And then, the chemical feed improvements will come in a second phase, and they, they're, the construction schedule on that will not be as accelerated. The new finished water pumps, we'll have to issue an RFP to go ahead and pre-select those, to have those ordered, and then have the, you know, the advertise for the contractors to install those and do these improvements. So, the water treatment plant number three, we wanted to, we're gonna develop another well in the proximity of that water treatment plant. It's, the area we're looking at's about 1,500 feet away, in the same aquifer that all these other wells are located. And, like I said, we, the, the plant capacity is, is sized for a total of 6 MGD. We have 4 MGD of a finished water pumping capacity under this phase, and we have a spot where you can just buy a bigger pump in the future when you need it. So, that plant will go to 6 MGD with, you know, basically issuing an RFP and having a pump, a pump manufacturer, or, excuse me, a pump sales rep and a contractor come install that pump to get it to that capacity. And that's a firm capacity. So, you got, if you look at it this way, you've got, right now, under construction, there's two 4MGD pumps, so that means you have a firm capacity of 4MGD, because you've got a redundant pump. You can pump 6MGD with those two pumps, but you don't have a quote "firm" capacity. The, the plan is to buy a 6MGD pump for that third spot, to where then you've got two 4MGD pumps that'll pump 6MGD, and then one 6MGD pump to... to give you what's referred to as firm capacity. And the other thing that, there'll be a new, uh, raw water transmission main to go about 1,500 feet, uh, to the existing, the, the new aerators at water plant number three. Yeah.
Want to mention why two four MGD pumps don't give you six?
Yeah, so hy- yeah, hydraulically, two four MGD pumps because the pump curves and you don't, you don't get eight MGD when you run two pumps, right? So the, what we look at is two four MGD pumps will give you six. I didn't, I don't have a pump curve to show you how you add those up, but that's just know that two four MGD pumps, it'll probably give you more than six, but that's what we're planning for.
When they're pumping into the same pipe, they have to work harder. So they can't put out as much water as they would if they were pumping out themselves.
And so what does all this mean? This is kind of a summary slide of the phase one and phase two improvements. Again, going back to that projection, uh, that you looked at earlier. The phase one will give you 10.9 and then the phase two, uh, will be 13.8. If you recall, we talked about that projection probably being a little higher than what we're showing here because when you're going in water restrictions, you're putting a cap on demand. Should also note that, you know, it's never, when you're having to run all your wells and all your pumps to meet your peak demand, that's not really rule of thumb. You, you really want to have about 20% additional capacity. That way, if a well pump goes out, a pump's down for maintenance and those peak demands come, you, you're not right there on the, the edge. And so, and the other thing to point out is, you know, how to move this water around the system, you know, where the demands come. And that's kind of where we're going with, with the planning for the future improvement. So there's a water system evaluation and then a hydraulic model. And what the hydraulic model's going to tell us when it's calibrated is we'll allocate demands. So where your higher demands are, we'll get your meter routes. And so then when we run the model, we can see that, okay, we've got this water here, but it needs to be here. And we need to do some distribution improvements to do that. Also, we can evaluate when a new development comes in. And there's 200 homes coming over anywhere in your system. Well, how do we supply them? Well, there's, that's one aspect. Okay, we need to do a 12-inch line. There's also a second thing we can do. When the developer comes and says, I'm developing 200 homes, that's great. We look forward to it, but we need a tank site. So we need to carve out some City of Fairhope property for a tank. Or we know from our geologist, there's potentially a water bearing sand there. And we want to come to a pilot board to see if, you know, we can, we can develop a well there. And, and this is pretty common practice. I mean, uh, that, that I've seen, that we've seen, you know, when, we, this will give you a roadmap for making those improvements. We know that we need a tank at some point on the north side of town. I mean, that, and I'm saying that now, that's what we feel. We don't know exactly where it's going to go, but when we see it, when a set of plans comes across and there's a big development on the north side of town, you know, that's when, okay, we need to look at getting some property, uh, to build a tank. Because it benefits that subdivision. I mean, it's fire protection, it, you know, it's their irrigation flow. It, it's not, you know, it's not that they're just giving it for nothing. It's needs to be up there if that area is going to continue to grow. Another thing we're doing right now is, or is part of this is pilot well exploration, which means you do a six-inch pilot bore and we find if there's a water bearing aquifer there. And so the areas we've, um, located at Morphy Avenue, Nickel Street, and Vicinia St. Michael Way on the north side. So the idea there is to go ahead and let, let's plan beyond 2024, maybe where's our next well going to be? And those are areas of higher demand and, and, and locations that some of the property the city already owns. So we're going to do pilot boards, see if, you know, we can, um, find a water bearing aquifer there. And then as far as what that deliverable looks like, you'll have a hydraulic model that's calibrated. We can run simulations. You'll have a, we'll identify recommended improvements. Typically, we do a zero to five, a five to 10, a 10 to 20. We like to plan on a 20-year horizon. And then we'll summarize that in the technical memorandum. What I just mentioned will be what we call a capital improvements projects plan. We'll work with everyone here, you know, not to, to, to talk about where those improvements need to be and how they're going to get constructed. Is there any questions?
Of course. So Caleb.
Yes.
So with our scenario, and you've been in the business, you're an expert. As we go forward 20 years out, with the irrigation, you mentioned a small part about the irrigation.
Right.
So what we're saying is we're going to set up the same exact system again, connected to the irrigation, everything coming out of the one aquifer, where all, everything is coming together. As opposed of doing something different and learning from what we've already gone through? Or do you not see that being a problem in the future again? Even if we're, so you're talking about firming up on the numbers. Even if we firm up on the numbers, the other numbers are going to grow as well.
Absolutely.
The demand is going to grow as well.
Absolutely.
So we have this, so what I'm asking us to think about, is there something while we're doing this that we need to think about, I'm not an expert, that is different as we go forward as far as our irrigation is concerned?
I think, so yeah, when we look at the 20-year horizon, the numbers we show right now are a, a double of your current capacity. I mean, so if you think about your water system right now and your treatment, look at double. Now, again, we're looking at a 3% to 5% projection over 20 years and, and that's a long way off. But like I said, we like to plan for 20 years.
Yeah, or more.
And, and when you drill a well, you know, your largest well is a thousand gallons per minute, which is a mil, you're roughly a million and a half gallons a day. So you think about, you know, if you're going to double your system, you're going to be drilling a new well, probably in the next zero to five years, at least every year. You know, I think we mentioned before, is there the opportunity for some type of reuse? I don't, I, I think, to answer your question, yes, especially when new subdivisions come in. Because you're kind of in a driver's seat for them putting those in, for them putting those utilities in the ground, a gray water system.
Yeah.
You know, the other thing we've looked at, and this is a, a water plant presentation, but, you know, doing some type of reuse just at your, just at your water plant, or your, excuse me, your wastewater plant. So there's some, and it, it's not going to make a, a big difference in your overall demand, but it's a start.
It's a start, okay.
You know, you can, if you, if you've been to the wastewater plant, you'll see sprayers and there's wash down. And it's pretty common to have what's called a plant water system.
Right.
Fire hydrants are purple and it's, it's just the color that's noted. So, um, that would be a start. You've already got, you've already got filters at your wastewater plant. So that, that water is, you know, pretty clean, especially when it comes to doing that. We've looked at the regulation on that some, and I do think that there, it does require disinfection.
You gotta have a chlorine residual. I mean, there's some money to be spent, a lot of money to be spent if you were to try to pursue reuse right now. Like all these things, it comes down, in our view, to just looking at the alternatives, right? Continue doing what you're doing, pulling water out of the ground, treat it, send it out to folks, you know, for consumption and for irrigation. Or if the groundwater supply were to ever, um, begin to, you know, dwindle or, or have some sort of quality issue, then it would be, well, what are we going to do to, you know, make better use? Do we pursue reuse now? Do we go to the bay, which is going to be a lot more expensive to treat, right?
Yeah, right.
And so if it comes just looking at the options as you move along through this and seeing what makes, you know, what are the costs? And then what are the intangibles? You know, there, you know, there may be things that are important to you guys other than cost. And so, you know, what we would typically do is just look at that as you move forward and look for opportunities. But it is tough, you know, say for example, to find an old water main that you could convert. You know, if you just got lucky and had an old water main that you could convert to reuse, it would save a lot of money, but there's still a lot of costs that would go with reuse. You're basically maintaining a separate distribution system.
No doubt.
And, and the council, you know, the city may decide that's something it wants to pursue, but there are a lot of costs.
Yeah, well, we, we know that nothing comes free, but what we want, what we don't want to do is have the same plain Jane thinking as we go forward and repeat history over and over and over and over and not prepare for the future. And so it's, it has to be talked about, you know? People keep talking about cost, well, it's going to cost.
Right.
Yeah, it's going to cost. We understand that. But, you know, does it cost us the next generation to where we're not thinking about it and moving forth in that direction? Like, pay me now or pay me later.
Right.
And that's, you know, it's just a common sense type of approach, but.
And I'm, yeah, I, I'm going to weigh in. Uh, Corey, I'm, I'm going to argue with you again on this. You, you want to use that water, the affluent to, to irrigation. And even, even if you did, that would require a little bit of treatment. But I'm telling you, you are going to have to hire, you're going to have to have an entirely different distribution system just for that. And it, it's just not, you know, I, I know you say that, you know, is it a cost? It, it is cost prohibitive to put a distribution system throughout our entire city just for irrigation. The, the better solution, if you want to do that, is to take that water and reclaim it and put it back into the existing distribution system. Treat it and use it for irrigation and other purposes. So, and I've heard, I've been told that ADEM won't allow that, but it's done all over the country. So ADEM needs to get out of the dark ages. If that's really the case, I'm not sure that's the case. But if that is the case, they need to allow us to use our reclaimed water to, uh, to, to recycle it. I mean, because I've talked to the head of the EPA and he said it's done everywhere. There's even grants for that.
It is, and, and we're, you know, we're spoiled in Alabama with our water supplies. I mean, we just are. We've seen a few instances, I can think of one just in Georgia, uh, a treatment plant where we're working, where they do reuse on a very limited basis, uh, maybe what Mr. Martin is talking about. But they, uh, send it to, I think it's a hospital that's not very far away. And the hospital uses it for irrigation. They have a pond up there that they use as sort of a water feature. So it's limited, but they do do a little bit of reuse. So it, it seems to us in the South, we tend to see more of those kind of baby steps.
Yeah.
Whereas, versus other areas of the country who are desperate for water, they're willing, really have to spend, have to consider that, you know, because to get water out of, you know, the Pacific Ocean or San Francisco Bay is crazy expensive to treat. And a lot of people, and so they say, okay, we can treat the effluent from the wastewater system probably, you know, for a similar cost. Here, you know, again, we're so blessed with water, it would be hard, at least in the immediate future, for the, in our opinion, for the reuse water, um, to compare favorably on a pure call, purely cost basis.
Yeah, I, 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 I understand. The vanity is to continue to think that you will always be blessed.
That's right.
And that's where, that's, that's my only point, guys, is in my opinion, that seems really vain to sit here in this position and not think that direction. We've done it in the past, you know, our highways are falling down right now, because that was the thought process. Different situation, but it doesn't have to be all done at once. All I'm asking is while we're doing this, can we take those baby steps to move towards being ready for the future? You, you know, you don't have to do it all at once, but there is something to preparation and planting seeds. You know, Rome wasn't built in a day, but it had to get planted at some point.
There's also, there's also the Councilman Martin, you know, it's not just, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that a desalination plant was, would be cost effective here. But we do have other surface waters here. They may shouldn't be saying this, but, but we have Fish River with millions and millions of gallons. We already have pipes going out there and that's a lot of surface water that's, you know, that we could tap into. If you just needed a couple of million gallons a day, it wouldn't even feel it. Maybe in, except in times of extreme drought and, you know.
Right.
But that, that's not putting any strain on the aquifer. If, if your concern is hydrology of an aquifer, which is, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not saying let's not be concerned with the aquifers. I'm just, I'm, I'm still trying to look for a cost effective solution to protect and out aquifer. And I think that reclaiming affluent or going to surface water is a,
Yeah.
is, is more cost effective.
And it may be grant money out there.
And, and accomplishes the same thing.
And it may be grant money out there. It may be money out there, they're looking to, to, to push this type of forward thinking. We, I mean, but to not explore it, I think would be, you know.
I'm not saying, I just, I'm just going to say that, that distribution system, you know, is cost prohibitive. Not to mention you have to tear up the entire, every, every inch of pipe that goes to everybody's house. You'd have to play an equal inch of pipe.
Yeah, but that's only one thought process. You don't have to do everybody. You can do new construction or you can do big areas. There's many ways that you can attack it. You don't have to really put it into the whole city to get started. You know what I mean? But, you know, but anyway, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Well, I had, I'm, I'm not through yet. I have one question for you. So, uh, you, you know, you said that you believe that our demand was, was capped basically by our legislation that we had. And I think to some degree that it is, but I don't, I still don't know that, I don't think that, that would have exceeded. So we were capped at 9.2. That, that's all we can treat anyway.
Right.
And fortunately, that's about where we peaked. Now, would that number have been 10 million MGD, 11? I don't know, but we didn't cap it for a while and we had an extreme drought and we saw. But when, when we enacted our legislation though, or invoked our ordinance, it, you know, it came down eight, seven and a half, eight and a half. So, uh, the 9.2 wasn't the peak with the legislation. And the reason I bring this up is if you look at that three to five year growth curve.
Right.
And I, I think you're going to be somewhere in there. I, I think five is a pretty aggressive. You know, you're going to be doubling what you need in 14 years and.
Right.
I don't know if our population is going, we're growing fast, but I don't know if the county's going to, you know, double in 14 years. And I say county because our water's not just in the city. But then again, I don't know if it's going to be a 3% and, and be, what's my number there? 24 years it would be at, at 3%. So it'd be at 50%, if you did a 3%, you would have a 50, you'd need 50% more capacity in 12 years, which would be 2035. Well, 50% more capacity if we go from 9.2 to 13.8 in May of 2024, we're at 50% more capacity in May of 2024. So the only reason I bring that up is we do absolutely need to plan for the future. But do we want to all, do we want to pay for all this in the next, you know, year or two? Something that's going to get us through the next 12 years. I'm saying we could maybe, we could slow that down a little bit. You know, we start talking about getting to, to 50% more capacity by May and then we're needing another, you know, three or four million gallons a day. It's putting a burden, I think, on our budget and it is pretty aggressive, is all I'm saying. I'm not saying I don't want to look forward, but 50% more capacity by May is, is a huge number. Huge number.
Yeah, I think you're right. And what we started looking at when that number was not, the 50% more capacity is not where we started. And then here's what we got to do. Where we started was looking at water plant number one. And so what's different about water plant number one than water plant number three? We've got, we can do a lot inside the existing footprints. We don't have to build a new treatment building. We do have to, what we are proposing is do some chemical improvements there to get rid of the chlorine gas and to go to liquid lime. And so there's some cost savings there as far as, you know, we didn't, and, and so you've got another well that, uh, Dan O'Donnell feels real confident in. There's already been some studies done there, so we're not doing the pilot board. It's already, some of that's already been done. We're going straight to a production well. So there's savings there. And then the other is at water plant number three. Like I said, the foresight there was to build that plant, you know, bigger. That way we could bring more wa, raw water to it. So it's drilling another well there. Uh, and you've already got the 24-inch, we've already got the larger pumps. So the, the increased capacity was not the number we sought. And then here's what we got to do to get it. It was, okay, what, what's some low hanging fruit right now?
I don't disagree with that, but to go beyond that, I start saying, do we need to do that? And I also agree with your 20% overage, you know, you definitely need to have that because you might lose a well due to a number of factors.
Right.
You know, mechanical or contamination, too much iron, you know, we've heard it all. So, uh, I don't disagree with that.
Right. So.
I just want us to, I want the council to be mindful of that, you know, just keep those numbers in mind. You know, start getting 50% and then another 50, pretty soon you're, in two years, do we need to be at 100% more than what we have now?
Yeah, I mean, I think we got a lot on the books.
We got a lot on the books is what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, futuristic wise, so I don't know.
The population's not going to double. The population's not gonna double in the next 15 years.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with, with that. I think, you know, like I said, it was, what's the low hanging fruit to get more capacity by next summer? And that's what, you know, uh, staff collectively, we've come up.
I agree with all of it, 100%.
Yeah, 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 next summer, yes. Yes.
And then the planning, I think the planning for the hydro model, you know, how to move that water around is really important. Not, and, and then it really, and I think about a, a place in North Alabama we worked, we did a, 10 years ago, we did a master plan for them, and all this development was going to the northeast, and it didn't happen there, it happened on the south side. Well, fortunately, that's what master plans do. I mean, it was, you know, that was what the council at the time thought, everybody thought, and then it, it shifted, but they'd had a plan to spend that money at some point. You know, if we see the growth drop down to 1%, it really just, you know, the, the capital improvements plan that we're talking about, it really just pushes it further out. You know, you, you, you don't spend that money if it's not there. If the growth slows to, you know, below 3% or, or if it, if it increases for whatever reason for a few years, and you need that.
And even, even in, in your defense, you know, if, if we get all this online, and next summer, we have all this capacity, then we see what our true demand is, because we let that demand be what it is.
Yeah, and all those charts we get.
We could be surprised the opposite. We could say, well, that's not gonna last for another, you know, six, seven years.
That's right.
My two cents then. One problem the city's had the last 35 years is there was no futuristic plan. It's been on us to do it. What my point is, this is a kind of a plan as you go type deal. Everything's, every day's a new day. The point is, the designs for future, as far as what we have to get more water, and to get to the areas, need to be designed and planned on. Now, whether or not you build them, it's a whole different ballgame. You've got half the battle done in three or four years, five years, 10 years, but the design's already being there, and then you find, okay, the growth didn't grow that much, we're really gonna have to have this. But when we do, we just shell these plans, this design, until we do need it. So, you know, my point is, I don't think we should stop looking for this, this future kind of plan. So I don't wanna put.
I don't, I don't wanna stop looking. I'm just cautioning about continuing to build and overbuild, because then, and then your, your demand goes to a different location. You guessed north, and it went south, or you guessed south, and it went north. That's a, that's a problem. Then you spent $10 million in infrastructure on the north side, but now you need $10 million on the south side, and that's going unused, largely unused. That's what, that's all I'm saying, is this, we, we use a little restraint with, before we, before we spend those dollars. Uh, the other thing that we're gonna have to think about, if we start increasing our capacity by 5 million gallons a day, how are we gonna treat it?
Right.
If you, if you're using five more million gallons a day, where are you gonna take it to to be treated?
That's right. I mean, that, then that's kind of, I mean, you go back to that map, but everything, you know, it's been, you've got three facilities that have a water treatment plant with multiple wells, and then the others are just a, a well and a treatment plant.
Oh, I'm not talking freshwater treatment, I'm talking sewer treatment.
Oh, yeah, I got you, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that, that's the problem. That was a huge concern. You know, you get that capacity in two years, you can unleash it because you can't treat, you can't treat it all.
Right.
At sewer plant.
That's right. Thank you all. Thank you for your time.
Um, committee updates? Any committee updates?
Well, we got an Airport Authority meeting tomorrow night. Uh, I, I have heard that, uh, you know, the negotiations with, with Conlon and Mudders are going pretty well. Supposed to get an update on that tomorrow. Uh, some of that might actually be in executive session, so I don't know if I'll be able to share any of that, but I just know that it's been going, uh, well. Uh, we've been trying to also, uh, look at the financing for the, the new terminal building, and, um, the, the bank wants the same arrangement that we had with the Airport Authority the last time. They want the city to cosign. I'm, I'm opposed to cosigning it, not, not because I don't want them to have the terminal book, because I want them to stand on their own two feet. And, um, the, uh, the bank is insisting, I think, on that, and I'm, I'm trying to give a little pushback on that, so that the Airport Authority can, um, can operate on them, because they should have the income easily, uh, to, to do that. And so, uh, but I believe if we give them a crutch, the, it takes away the incentive for them to stand on their own two feet. That's why I'm opposed to it. But I'm, I'm not so opposed that I would cut the legs out from under them either. I just feel like we need to convince the bank to let them take it on by themselves. I also might need, um, Marcus isn't here, I want, um, I want some of our attorneys to look into, uh, the language of that last issuance that's, that, you know, uh, I've been told that we can't go to any other financing sources for that, which I find very hard to believe. Uh, I, I, I can't imagine we have some document that wouldn't let us seek other, uh, funding, because there is another financial institution that will, uh, loan the Airport Authority the money without the city's backing. Just put that out there. And haven't had any other committees since, been, you know, beginning of the month.
Who's lower? Okay, I don't have anything right now. You have anything? All right, department heads, anything on the agenda tonight? Come on up. Agenda items five through 35, I believe.
Good evening, thank you for the time. I wanted to introduce you to our new Marina manager, Fairhill Docks. This is Mark Redditt. Uh, he checked all the boxes for us, met all the qualifications, and we're excited to get him acclimated. He's been here almost a month.
About three weeks.
Yeah. So, Mark Redditt.
It's a pleasure to meet you all.
Nice to meet you, Mark. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Good luck, my friend.
I appreciate it.
Yes. Say good luck.
We're, we're getting it well tasked down there, so.
Very good, very good, very good.
We'll get up to speed quick.
Well, we're glad to have you.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I have one, uh, item agenda, number 23, which is the much anticipated paint robot. It is a GPS driven paint machine. Uh, I did put some general numbers together just so you see how this would help us. Um, we, we are currently painting two football fields at the Barnwell complex. They have, uh, flag football and tackle football, spring and fall. That's about 340 man hours of painting in Barnwell alone. The soccer complex is our biggest, uh, complex with nine soccer fields. And the, and within those nine fields, we paint multiple fields on each field. Um, with, with the two tournaments we have every year, and with seasonal play, spring and fall, we're looking at, uh, roughly 550 man hours, uh, at the soccer complex. At the football stadium, um, obviously painting for football games and soccer games, uh, is another 470 man hours. So all in all, we're looking at, you know, close to 1,340 man hours in painting. So we spend a lot of our time, uh, painting sports fields. Um, and so we are hoping to improve our efficiency this year with, with our man hours, and, and this would be a tremendous help to us, uh, so we can spend more time on other maintenance items and doing other detailed things around our parks. So I would appreciate your consideration for this machine.
Is it a hybrid machine?
It is not a hybrid machine.
Thank you, Pat. This includes the paint?
Roughly $4,000, yeah.
Hey, Wes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have agenda item number 29. Um, you see there, we've got an issue. It's an unbudgeted issue, um, with the engineering, but luckily for the construction part of this issue that we've got on our gas line in Daphne, we can cover with our, uh, on-call contractor. We can, we can use the construction costs there, but, uh, wanted to bring to you tonight this, uh, issue with, uh, the gas main and the creek, at, at Double Leaf Creek in, in Daphne, and, uh, uh, request that you guys approve that, that engineering, uh, unbudgeted amount. Unfortunately, it's something that we've gotta deal with, and, uh...
It's budgeted.
Okay, all right. Scratch the unbudgeted part. Still got the issue on the gas line.
Thanks, Wes.
I was dealing with something today that, I'm, I'm merging two projects, so, uh, it is a budgeted item. But, uh, hopefully you will consider that. That's the only item that I have for you tonight.
Is this the location you took me to once?
It's not, no, sir.
Lake Forest, no?
No. That's, that's, that's a...
A different crossing?
A different crossing, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it. All right, thank you, Wes. Jeff?
Got one, got one item on the agenda, number 25. It's just a annual, annual renewal for our Cronos timekeeping software. Got any questions?
The 8% increase, not surprising, but that hasn't increased in a while, has it?
Well, surprisingly enough, this is actually our last year with Cronos. They have decided to pull the plug on this, this program, and we are looking to move forward with another solution. So this will be our actual, our last year, but they haven't increased this support in quite a while. I think they're trying to up it a little bit, just to kind of move people on. My, my guess, but...
We don't want you to, therefore, we're gonna raise the price, is that it?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. I wanted to give you all a quick update. We got an email from Hannah Legg, uh, this morning about Arts Alley. She has completed the murals, um, as well as the anti-graffiti and some type of, um, finish? Some type of anti-graffiti finish on both of the murals, um, if y'all have taken a look at Arts Alley. So she was very quick to, um, to finish those projects, which we were very excited to see go up. So if y'all haven't taken a look, we are gonna have a ribbon cutting once that project gets near completion, and so obviously, everybody will have an invitation to that. But we're really excited to see those kind of take shape, and, and everybody's been super complimentary of, of Hannah and, and how it's all turned out, so I hope y'all are happy with those. Another thing I just wanted to mention, we, um, have hired a second shuttle driver for our downtown shuttle, so we'll be expanding those hours and days for the downtown shuttle. So, um, y'all take a look. We'll have two part-time drivers out there, um, Monday through Saturday, so, um, we're excited to have him join us in a week or two, so.
So the demand has increased that much more than I said?
Yes, yes and no. It, there are days when it is, Fridays, towards the end of the week are, are busier days. Nikki, who is our current shuttle driver right now, um, God love him, at the very beginning, he didn't have very many drivers at all. He said more than likely, he was just telling folks how to get to, from certain places downtown. But, um, he has, he's done well, and I think people have kind of gotten used to it a little bit more, but, um, we're hoping to kind of expand on it. Our merchants downtown definitely push and help us promote it. Um, so I say, those are probably our biggest advocates for using the shuttle. Um, we're hoping to get some of their employees to take advantage of it once the parking garage is fully finished, and we're gonna get those employees to park there and be shuttled to the front of their business, so.
Do you ask him to stay on the first floor where people can find him? So...
Okay, yeah.
I see him typically on the third floor.
Oh, do you? On the top floor or on the very bottom?
Next to top floor.
Okay. Um, okay, I will. Um, and there's also the number there, we've got flyers that are in our welcome center and a lot of our downtown shops, so we try to, he does get a lot of phone calls for folks to pick up, and even wanting to take them to the pharmacy and take them different places, so.
Does he, does he do drive-throughs? Meaning like he just kind of show himself, you know?
Oh, that's all, that's, yeah, he's usually just making circles and driving around.
Okay.
So, um, and then obviously, our appropriations are on the council agenda tonight, so if y'all have any questions, um, I can try my best to answer those for, um, for those.
Which, which ones?
All the appropriations that are on the agenda tonight. If there's questions, and there's not a representation here tonight to answer them, I can be, do my best to help y'all with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
A lot of those. Anybody else? Yep, Richard.
Counsel, there are 35 agenda items, and not one of them is mine. But I do want to give you a quick update, Founder's Track. Uh, if, if you're bored at lunch, go eat your sandwich out there. The subcontractor, Helles, is actually starting to put down the track surface, and it's pretty fascinating to watch. Uh, and, uh, the grass on the infield is greening up and, and starting to really take shape, so, so check that out. Our roof project is wrapping up here. It's gone very well. Um, and, uh, I, I think that, uh, we're excited about that, and we were able to address the air conditioning. So this room now has an air conditioner, it has a thermostat, which is a novel concept instead of just on or off. Road paving is, is almost, uh, complete. There's, there's two projects in that, in that subset. White Avenue, uh, the contractor's working with us to delay that one for the gas cast iron replacement, so that we're not cutting up a new road. But they will be moving as soon as we get the roofers out of here, and if you notice out front, we're doing some curb cut and some curb repairs. We're getting ready to resurface the City Hall Civic Center complex, um, parking lot, get it restripped, and then Jamie and his team from Horticulture is gonna give the landscape a, a complete redo, so hopefully, uh, new roof, new parking, some prettier landscape, and we'll, we'll get a few more years out of the old girl here at City Hall, um, and Civic Center. And then, uh...
Does it identify as a female?
Well, I'm sorry, I did not mean to, uh...
Come on, man.
And then finally, the, the Haven project is in the wrap-up phase. We're, we're getting ceilings and flooring put in, and hopefully, we'll have our, our folks in Haven back in that building shortly. That has gone really well, and if you hadn't been by, stop by and take a look. It really has turned out really nice, and, uh, I know our, our stakeholders there at the Haven are very excited to, uh, to have a, a roof that doesn't leak, and walls that don't crumble, and things of that nature, so. And, uh, with Arts Alley and, and the Clock Plaza, uh, we, we meet with the contractor on a daily basis, remind him what day of the week it is, and what day of the month, and what, when we have to be finished. So we're gonna probably race up to the line, but, uh, the lighting of the trees, everything's gonna be put together, open, and, and ready to celebrate, so, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. All right, Hunter, you have five? Is Hunter here? Oh, go ahead.
Counsel Martin?
Yes, sir.
So last week was Public Power Week. Big thanks to Pat and his crew. They hosted us at the golf course, Cook Real. Counsel Martin, he got to meet some of the guys, so had a good time out there.
Yeah, we did.
Everybody enjoyed it, appreciate for y'all letting us do stuff like that. I do have one thing on the agenda, it's 24. It's, uh, Richard and I had met with Dr. Bill probably about four months ago. So it's a coastal weather forecast, and it's, everything's actually based out of South Alabama, the college, so it is a, and what they do, you get multiple updates throughout the day, and it's a collection of data that pertains to us. We're not worried about something happening in California or anywhere else, so it's gonna help storm, basically for the storms. So we'll have one more...
Source of information.
Sort right.
Yeah, okay.
A lot, a lot of other municipalities and everything use this throughout, throughout state also. So it's, uh, Troy, I know Troy, I know Brian uses it, and a couple of the Riviera uses it, a bunch of co-ops around here use it too.
Just gives us a head up.
It does, it does, it gives more, it takes more information for the coast.
Have we missed a storm?
No, it just helps the impact.
The other thing, I, that's the other thing I need to do for, and, uh, in the core, is to be able to try to call and ask questions if we're gonna have an event like, when we always have those top-up storms and stuff. like July, when we always have those top-up storms and stuff. Granted, there's a lot of apps that track things for us, but they're able to give you more specific information depending on your area.
For here, Doppler.
Right, from a safety perspective, when we have larger crowds in town like the microbursts that we had during our, so it's kind of, it's what a lot of municipalities use before.
Just helps us make better decisions, okay.
It's just, the good thing about this is we can have multiple people on the email contact list, it's just not one person. Only thing I ask is to do is not share, share that information with, with everybody else. So if the city email, we can, we can put it on there.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope. Any questions, guys? Good.
Thank you.
My other brother, Darrell.
I'm back.
Yes, sir.
I've got item number 26, GIS utility interface mapping. Has to map our water and sewer system, manholes, valves, lift stations, pipe hydrants. All right.
How extensive is that? You don't hear me say this very often, that sounds a little, that sounds pretty cheap. That's, is that gonna, what, what all is that gonna cover? I mean.
One, one thing that I will mention on that is that, you know, we have some current information, but we need to take everything we have and put it together. We have information from different sources, like the Restore Project and everything else. They're gonna actually take everything and put it together, let us see what parts we're missing, make sure we map those pieces we're missing. We also have several long-term employees who, who may, you know, think about retirement, wanna make sure we capture that information in their head, the valve that's located to the left of the third tree and the, on the second road of the subdivision, those kind of things. So, you know, we've been able to do that with gas, with Magnolia River. So again, this is them taking everything we currently have, whether it be through planning and GIS, through other contracts that we've done and putting it all together. So they may not have to go out and collect all the data, Councilman Burrell, but it's, it's still a good bargain, I believe.
Oh, it's a bargain. That doesn't bother me. It's a bargain, all right. I think it's a great deal. I mean, thank you. All right. That's it. All right. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have item number 30. It's on the grants management contract to extend it another year.
Kim, you know, we, we're paying them monthly, and I, I know we call on them, but we have so many contracts that they're managing now that we've been awarded, and they're getting paid on those, sometimes not two, thousands of dollars a month. So I just wanna do a temperature check. Is it necessary to, to keep them on the, the retainer when they're doing all these other contracts for us?
Yeah, they, they bill us separate. The, the work they do separate on the Restore contracts, we get invoice for the separate work detailed out. And then also, we have them on some other projects that, other grants, let's just put it, like the K-1 Center, they, they work, they're working on that grant.
That fall under the retainer work?
Yes, that's under the retainer work. Electric car grants, I mean, there's just.
So they're active every month too? In addition to what the grant monies are?
Yes.
Managing the grants that we've already received? Okay.
Yes.
All right, cool.
The other one that I've just highlighted here is number 28, was the Jackson Thornton CPA firm that's working on, this is gonna be water and wastewater system development charges.
I can piggyback on that a little bit. I think Councilman Martin and I spoke about it today. This is something actually, as a request of Councilman Martin, we were talking, just to make sure we're doing, you know, system development charges fair and equitable across the board, to have them lay out a plan for us to do those charges for water and wastewater first and foremost, and then we'll move on to gas and electric, but we're gonna start with water and wastewater.
Yeah, something we really need to do. Yeah, all right. Anybody else? Got a lot of agenda items, so. So final adoption number five, that's Hunter. Hunter's not here today? Okay. And the Sickley, Lisa or Mayor, I guess, that's, that's something we've already talked about as far as.
Right, that was introduced last meeting, and that gives the employees the option of being able to submit their service time for their, for service credit with RSA, their sick time, or take out ALUM sum payment.
Okay. Yeah, and we talked about all of the contracts as far as the budget. Lisa's gonna look to see if we can consolidate, Jack, some of these action items that are the same action, and we can do a consensus, a unanimous consensus. Instead of having to, to, to go through each. And Paige said she can speak on a lot of these as well. So I think the majority of our, of our agenda items tonight are on those contracts where we are doing charitable donations as far as our community is concerned. And they're speaking to what those particular entities will do in response to those charitable donations.
Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. Also, on number 32, Councilman Burrell may wanna speak to this also. We have been meeting, we had met with the Fairup Educational and Management Foundation. This was a request to allow their annual sponsors from their golf tournament to have use of their pavilion because it does not allow for rentals in the, in the current contract we have with them, but we will allow their sponsors to have a one-time rental of their facility.
So let's, let's repeat that again, 'cause I was looking at that one. So they're saying in this, because they are a particular level sponsor.
Correct.
And in their contract, they had advocated for this particular ask.
Correct.
Which is for their sponsors to be able to use their facilities?
Right, so if you're a bronze, silver, or gold sponsor for the golf tournament, then that will allow you one rental of their facility.
And when they say rental, are they saying that they will receive the rental money, monies for that particular sponsor?
The rental is included in their sponsorship.
In the sponsorship.
Correct.
Correct, okay. And that doesn't hold us, we've checked, crossed all the i's and dotted the t's as far as the liability, all that with the city facility, and, you know, them subcontracting in a silly facility, blah, 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 blah.
We, we lease that facility to them, so they have all that liability, and they have the city of Fairup listed as an additional insured, so they have all that taken care of.
Very good. And the pest control, I guess, that's, that's, the pest control is just a re-up, okay? Simple is what it is? Okay, very good. We talked about the creps, number 27. I guess if we have any other questions, you guys will be around. Caleb, y'all will be around for that. Let's see, there's another FIF on here, I believe.
Well, number 34, number 35 are part of the annual appropriations that we make, ones to the Eastern Shore Optimist Club, ones to FIF for the golf tournament.
Okay, yeah.
Number 33 is a request from the Home Builders Association to allow them to put directional signs on the right-of-way for two weekends. They're usually very responsible with that. They'll put them out and pick them up, same day basically, overnight. So they're not there longer than 48, 24 to 48 hours.
Very good.
Can, can we ask they not put them in the flower beds, though?
Is there anything else from any other department heads?